Good evening and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 20th, 2012. Thank you for your patience in allowing the overflow line into the room this evening. At this time, I would like to invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Holder?
Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening, we ask your blessings on each of us as we go about the duties of serving the people of Henry County. We ask that your blessings be on our men and women in uniform, both at home and abroad. And we also ask, Heavenly Father, that your thoughts be with the Coker and Cook families due to the tragic mishap of Doug Coker. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order, and before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I do have one correction to make. That correction is under planning and zoning services. There is a discussion of the urban redevelopment plan for undeveloped or blighted areas within Henry County. This is not a public hearing. This is for discussion purposes only. The public hearing pertaining to this item will be advertised at the next Board of Commissioner meeting. So with that change being in place, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda tonight is something that we have come to enjoy and look forward to each year, and that is the presentation of new artwork by students to be displayed within the administration building. And I know we certainly enjoy having this, and I believe this is our third year that we've had this, and we have some extremely talented students in the school systems that we want to recognize this evening. And with that, I would like to mention that this would not be possible without sponsors for the project. Those sponsors are the Dentistry for Children, Georgia Power, the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, Lambert Sand and Gravel, McDonough Arts Council, Obie's Barbecue, Catfish and Ribs, Smith Welch Web and Wine, Snapping Shoals EMC. And certainly, it could not be accomplished without the art teacher that has helped to coordinate and collect the artwork, Ms. Joanie Bowen. And with that being said, I would like to turn it over to Michael Harris, who is going to present the certificates to the students who are here today. And we would ask that, once you receive that certificate, if you would come up to the front here, we'd like to take a group photograph. Michael?
Thank you, Chairman. And you're right. For all the meetings that we had, this is certainly one of the nicest ones that we get a chance to participate in. It was funny, early this week, we actually were changing out some of the pictures. We had a day when there were no pictures on the walls, and numerous people come in and commented, "Hey, what happened to the pictures? What are you gonna do?" And then we were able to come back and change out the new picture, and everyone was just thrilled to see the incredible talent level that we have within our school system. And, you know, this year, we were actually able to expand the medians to include a couple of sculpture pieces that we have displayed outside the door. So, you know, every year, it's kind of been able to grow and expand a little bit more. So, looking at a couple of different medians, and again, it's just a testament to the great work that our teachers and our teachers are doing within our public school system. So with that, I'd like to kind of go through the list in alphabetical order, and as the Chairman has noted, as your name is called, if you could please just come right on up and receive your certificate and prepare for a picture with the Commissioners. And forgive me if I injure some of the names. First is Ms. Rebecca Akri. Ms. Shelby Baker. Tori Bellew. Colleen Beach from Locust Grove Middle School. Chloe Burdette from Luella Elementary. Madison Bramlett from Rock Spring Elementary. Wyatt Butler from Eastlake Elementary. Achille Casslin from Oakland Elementary. Mary Chu from Dutch Town Elementary. Jaleah Crockett from Hampton Elementary. Trinity Davis from Wesley Lakes Elementary. Colleen Debenifer from Rock Spring Elementary. Denise Garcia from Red Oak Elementary. Nikki Gladney from Ola High School. Jessica Goodman, also from Ola High School. Ansley Guy from Dutch Town Elementary. Emma Harding from Cotton Indian Elementary. Lauren Harrison from Ola Middle School. Allison Hensley from Locust Grove High School. Allison Hensley. Amber Hernandez from Hampton Middle School. Noel Hofseth from Ola High School. Noel Hofseth. Rona Holland from Cotton Indian Elementary. Skylar Hudson from Flippin Elementary. Katie Hunt from Temple Ridge Elementary. Song Kang from Union Grove High School. Erica Kennedy from Ola Elementary. Gunhee Kim from Hickory Flat Elementary. Trevor Jackson from Stockbridge High School. Brittany Jordan from Hampton Middle School. Lorie L Latimer from Luella High School. Karen Leal from Stockbridge Middle School. Randy Messinger from Luella High School. Jasmine Perez from Mount Carmel Elementary. Hassan Quadri from Stockbridge Middle School. Daisy Rogers from Bethlehem Elementary. Aleah Samms from Union Grove Middle School. Megan Seilinger from Woodland Elementary. Carter Steele from Rocky Creek Elementary. Aubrey Stadenmeyer from Pleasant Grove Elementary. Pamela Turley from Union Grove Middle School. Brittany Vila from Henry County High School. Kristen Walsh from New Hope Elementary. Destiny Watson from Tuscaloosa Elementary. Sully West from Locust Grove Middle School. Anna White from Woodland High School. Mila Woodson from Page Creek Elementary. And Chloe Young from Pleasant Grove Elementary. If by chance, we've left anyone out that your artwork is being presented, please come on up, and we'll make sure we get the presentation, the certificate to you at a later time. So if anyone else that was inadvertently left out, please come forward. Yeah, parents, please. You're welcome to come up here and take a picture as well. And that's everyone. Thank you. Excuse me. We have one more. In front of Little Lake. Please come on up here and push me. Randy.
And you're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Probably not the most exciting things that these kids would want to do on a Tuesday night. So if you would like to leave at this time, you're certainly welcome to do that as well. We'll give you just a few moments to clear the room. But thank you so much, and congratulations, parents. Yeah, let's do that. Great work.
He probably would.
I'm not. Who went to school? Who went to high school?
Oh, really? She looks a lot younger.
That's Archie Lindsey McGarry, his first cousin. Her mother and Ian was her sister. Susan West. You know, John Espey, right?
All right. We're gonna move on in the agenda to the presentation of safe awards to the Henry County Transit Drivers. And we're certainly appreciative of all their hard work in transit. There are a total of 12 drivers who have earned the award. Only seven can make it to the meeting here tonight. Their director, David Williamson, is here. And this is one year with no preventable accidents. So we want to certainly recognize them as transit. They log a lot of miles on those transit buses each and every day through Henry County. And to go a year accident-free is certainly something we're extremely proud of. And so we want to take this time to recognize these individuals. We have, and David, I'm gonna allow you an opportunity to say something too, if you'd like. We have Tammy Austin, James Burley, David Pike, Priscilla Romming, Robert Rainey, Tina Talbot, Jim Walsingham. And the ones who are unable to be with us this evening, Faith Strickland, Eva Waite, Doris Barnett, Dwayne Hunter, and Susan Karrison. And would you like to say something about these outstanding drivers?
Yes, I would. We appreciate the opportunity for y'all to recognize our drivers. In 23 years of transit service, the department has only been involved in one disabling accident in 23 years, and it was not the transit department's fault. So not only do the drivers monitor the traffic around them, the pedestrians, but they're also monitoring their passengers inside the bus for their safety, watching out and making sure that they're okay. These folks have averaged somewhere around 26,000 miles a year, and it's just outstanding the work that they've done. We've got a good program and a real good staff, and we appreciate y'all recognizing them tonight.
And we would like to come and get a picture with them as well. Thank you. And just to let the citizens know, it's the safe awards, that to have drivers that log that many miles in a county vehicle without an accident is a huge savings to Henry County. It's a savings in insurance premiums, it's a saving in workers' comp claims, it's a savings in liability payouts. And so the fact that they are so careful in their job is certainly a benefit to the citizens of our county. And I know, I speak for the entire board when I say how much we appreciate the caution and the care they take in operating county vehicles. Moving on in our agenda, we're gonna go to a presentation by the consultant firm of Mullen and Lonergan regarding the CDBG program. And Michael, I will turn this over to you for an introduction.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome again, Commissioners. Just real quickly, I want to introduce the consultant. A few weeks back, we passed our public participation plan as it relates to community development, block grant funds. And we have secured a consultant at this time to assist us with the process. And therein, today, just kind of give an overview of what the program is all about, address any questions that the board may have. So this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Wazlinski and Mr. Whitney Finstrom from the firm of Mullen and Lonergan Associates.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. I'd like to begin by, again, just reintroducing our firm, Mullen and Lonergan Associates, and Bill Wazlinski and my colleague Whitney Finstrom. And first off, I wanted to thank you for selecting our firm to help the county through this very important process of preparing its first five-year consolidated plan for the community development block grant program. Just this evening, we just wanted to kind of briefly run through the process that we're gonna be undertaking here over the next couple of days. And then also, just some general, what's eligible, what's not eligible under CDBG programs. You are a new urban county, and you, as a result, be receiving entitlement dollars from HUD over, you know, every year from now on. So I thought it would be just good just to kind of go through what's eligible, what's ineligible, and just open it up for discussion purposes, or questions that you may have afterwards. So to begin with, I just wanted to kind of go through what the requirements are of a five-year consolidated plan. By becoming an entitlement community, you're required to prepare this five-year plan, and it lays out generally what the needs are, priority needs are of the county in terms of housing and community development, economic development. It also provides a framework for which we help to identify high priority needs within in the community, and those are by which we go through and help to provide you some guidance in terms of what you can select projects to fund under this consolidated plan. One of the processes that we're gonna, first off, this covers, it's a five-year plan, it'll cover July 1st, 2012 through 6:30, 2016. And it's, we go through a pretty extensive stakeholder consultation process. This is, we're here this morning, we got here around noon, and we will be here through Thursday, culminating with a public hearing, public needs hearing, on Thursday evening in this, in this building, in this room, to provide general input from the community in terms of what they feel the needs are in this process. Between now and then, we are going to undertake a number of stakeholder meetings through various organizations within the county. We met with your staff today, we talked with the transit folks, we talked with the folks that coordinate your NSP program, which is very vital in terms of housing. We're talking with human service providers, support service providers, homeless providers within the county. Anything that touches community development, human services, and/or housing is, we hope to discuss and meet with them during this process. The goal is to come up with a housing and homeless needs assessment, which will be based on demographics as well as the stakeholder input, come up with a housing market analysis, determine what are needs within the community, strategic plan, and then obviously, as I mentioned earlier, local priorities. That's critical that we identify the high priority needs, because that's, those high priority needs are projects that can, you have to be able to fund with your first annual allocation. So we really want to take care that we identify high priority needs, so that you can fund activities that meet a high priority need within the county. The other thing that we're going to be doing is preparing your annual action plan for 2012. I believe the county is getting $850,000 in CDBG dollars. We have to delineate how those funds will be spent on what activities, make sure they're eligible under the program, and make sure they meet a high priority need that's identified. Again, this is part of our citizen participation process. We're conducting, as I said earlier, a public hearing on Thursday evening in this office, and we also provide a number of outlets in terms of getting the public to participate in this process. I just wanted to run down some general, basic eligible activities. These aren't a complete list, but the primary list of major activities that can be undertaken: housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, public facilities improvements, that would be street reconstruction-type projects, blight removal, demolition and site preparation, code enforcement, economic development, that creates jobs, if that's identified as a need, acquisition and disposition of real property, and public services. I just want to take a second to talk about public services, because that's a separate, you could allocate up to 15% of your grant, if you so choose, you're not required to, to carry out public services that are eligible. That could be anything from employment-type training programs, crime prevention, drug education, fair housing. Again, it's, you're able to do that if you choose to, you're not required. Some communities do do it, others do not, but you can exceed 15% of a grant allocation on that amount. Ineligible activities are really important, because you don't want to have to repay federal dollars back to HUD if you, if you spend a dollar that's not on an eligible activity. And just an overview of things that you cannot do. You can't use these funds for political activities. You cannot construct housing. You can rehabilitate housing, but you can't construct housing. You can't operate maintenance of public improvements, operation and maintenance, so you can't pay your folks to do the public facilities and improvements. No general government expenses, no purchase of equipment, and no direct income payments. The other key component of the CDBG program is that you have to meet what they call one of three national objectives. It has to be an eligible activity, as we just talked about, and it has to meet one of these three eligible activities. It has to benefit either low to moderate income, and at least 70% of the grant has to go towards benefiting low to moderate income persons in some way, shape, or form. You could do prevention of, or elimination of blight, which would be demolition-type activities, but you cannot exceed 30% of the grant amount on that type of activity. And then the third, less common, but important, is urgent need. If there was a flood, or tornado, or you had to reconstruct a road because of a national, or an emergency situation, there is an eligible activity to do that if there is a need. There are a number of ways, I won't bore you with the details, but there's a number of ways to meet the national objective under each one of these activities. I just want to call your attention to the low mod benefit, because I think it's pertinent in terms of what we talked about earlier today with some of your staff members. There's ways to fund activities that don't necessarily benefit low to moderate income persons, but they could be what they call presumed benefit or limited clientele. That could be a handicap accessibility-type project, you know, YMCA, or a boys' club, where you're providing a lift or a ramp to help accessibility-type issues. You could do curb cuts on curbs and streets to help persons with, in a wheelchair, to address that. You can create jobs, obviously, that's a critical eligible activity. Slums and blight is, as I said before, demolition and urgent need. So I don't want to bore you with the details, but just provide you with a little bit of background to that. This chart up here on the board tells your most current, this was released just this year for fiscal year 2012. This is the definition of low to moderate income households within the county. So activities that are carried out must benefit populations that have incomes of these ranges for, up to, you know, whatever, depending on the household size. This indicates to us that it's a very wealthy community, and you're blessed, but these are very high incomes, so, you know, you can help folks up to these income limits for the size of household that it is. I think we talked about this, you have $850,000 in CDBG funds for fiscal year 2012, and that's why we're here, to talk about how to do that. This is more for our public input process of the slideshow that we'll use on Thursday evening, but we're asking the folks, when we meet with them as a stakeholder or as part of the public hearing outreach process, you know, what are the primary community development and housing goals in the county, and how can these needs be documented or Just a brief overview of the schedule, you have a start date of July 1st, and what that means is that we have to have these documents completed. We have to carry out the public needs hearing and stakeholder consultation in March and April, that's why we're here today. We would need your input in terms of official review of the document and guidance in terms of selecting priorities, and how you want to spend your fiscal year 2012 in April or May. The goal is by May 1st, that we put this document, which is required under the program, on what they call public display for 30 days. So from May 1st to June 1st, the document will be on file here, will be on your website, at various locations throughout the county for the general public to review and comment on, so that we can then come back after, between June 1st and June 15th, and make any revisions necessary to that document, and then submit it to HUD for review and approval on June 15th. At this time, I just want to say again, thank you, and open it for any questions that you may have to us, or address any issues that you may have.
Senate Board Member have a question or a comment? Mr. Holder?
As far as this, one of the categories, of course, were slums, blight, or blighted neighborhoods. Who determines that?
That's generally determined by probably members of your That's generally determined by probably members of your planning department, could be a redevelopment area. There's very specific, based on each state, there's different laws that determine what is blighted property. Generally, there's a series of criteria. I don't know the state of Georgia's urban redevelopment law, but I'm sure Michael could probably talk about that a little bit, but that's generally what they use.
Okay, one other question. In Henry County currently, what percentage of Henry County is considered blighted or slums? Michael?
In our discussions earlier today, we looked through some of the, and it is a variety, we're principally focusing in on particular census tracts that have been enumerated that designate areas that meet the, those designations. And I think we isolated about three-
That's correct.
-three areas approximately that, and we're going to talk a little bit later on about opportunity zones, redevelopment areas. And there is some similarities between the areas that were identified through, through HUD, which is who kind of helps mandates where those, where those, and defines those areas, that we saw with the 15% poverty levels that have been identified through the opportunity zone process. So again, there's about three areas, I think, that we identified.
Yeah, yeah, I could tell you generally, it's the, these are by census tracts, but just generally geographically, it's Southern McDonough, part of McDonough, a section of Locust Grove, a section of Hampton on the corner of the county, and then the Stockbridge area. Again, those aren't, sure.
How will the projects be allocated? And how will the, how will the funds be allocated?
That is entirely up to you, as an urban county, to make that decision in terms of how they're allocated. I can say that there has been, communities, each of the cities have entered into cooperation agreements with the county because they've opted out of the state program. And so what that means is that there's an opportunity for them to achieve CDBG funds through your program, through your entitlement program. But how that is determined, as long as it's an eligible activity and within one of these, you know, areas that we've identified here on the screen, and it's, you know, based on Michael's staff department recommendations, that's what we would-
Yeah.
So how influential will the stakeholders be in this process?
Well, I think that as, as the process begins, again, we're literally just beginning the process, the stakeholders, what they provide is input and insight on what, helping to identify what some of the needs are, particularly as they relate to low to moderate income population within the community. So, you know, right now, this initial phase of the process is gathering that information to identify what some of those needs are. The consultant, Bill, and Whitney will subsequently, after that, kind of compile that report and give us a breakdown of here's what's been identified by some of your stakeholders as some of the pressing needs within the community. And then from that point, we begin kind of, you know, vetting through that information to determine, you know, identifying priority projects from there. And once we begin identifying those priorities, all those projects, we prioritize them from high, medium, to low priority, and that becomes the basis of our action plan.
And the other interesting thing to keep in mind when you're going through that process is not only eligibility and, and where you want to do that, but the ability of the project to move forward quickly. You are a new entitlement community, you want to make a good impression on HUD, you want to take, undertake projects that can move quickly, that you can do and identify and move quickly, and show them that you have the capacity to carry out these types of projects. The worst thing in the world is that if you come this time next year, you haven't spent any of your federal dollars, now HUD is, is upset because you have this time limit issue, you're not spending your first year, now you have another year coming on board. So it's really important to choose those projects that can move forward and, and expend the money in a, in a quick fashion.
I know you probably covered this in your presentation, and you've identified three or, three or four areas in the county that are low to moderate income. Is there a possibility to look outside those areas based, based on blight?
Yes, and not just blight, but also, I think I discussed presumed benefit. So if there's areas in the northern part of the county or the southern, southeastern part of the county where, for example, there's a, a baseball field that, there's a public restroom that needs handicap accessible alterations made, or curb cuts, those are all eligible projects that can be carried out in what we call non-low mod income house areas of the county.
How about infrastructure improvements?
Those are absolutely eligible, streets, street improvement, street reconstruction, sewer, sanitary sewer, all that stuff is absolutely eligible. Again, you want to make sure that you carry about in those areas that are identified as low mod area. There is an ability, if you should decide to carry out in another area, you, you have the ability, which I wouldn't recommend because it's a very difficult undertaking, but you can, you can identify an area, what they call area-wide benefit. And if you draw a service area around, circle around that service area, you can benefit from that project, and you carry out an income survey in that area, and it turns out that 51% or above are low mod, you could carry out an activity in that area as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder?
And it could be to Michael or the consultants either. Is there any significance in the map, as it's shown here, that all of the blighted or slum areas are located within the incorporated areas of the four cities in Henry County? Is there any significance to that, or was it targeted for that reason, or?
These, well, first off, these, just to be clear, just so we're all clear, these are not blighted areas, these are what we call low to moderate income. That means 51% or more of the households in those areas are low to moderate income person. These, these areas are not identified by anyone, these are released by HUD.
Okay, but low to moderate incomes, so those are existing within the cities, not necessarily, and I know we have it in the unincorporated area too, but this is targeted for cities, correct?
No, I mean, this is countywide overall, and they just pulled the census tracts-
Right.
-that met those, that met those qualifications.
But those census tracts show that they obviously were in the city limits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have no further questions.
I just want to make sure that one of the primary things that I saw in the objective was that 70% of the money has to be used for those low to moderate incomes. So that's why you guys positioned this chart up there to show the areas.
That's correct. You have to, at least 70% of your funds, over a three-year period, have to go to what they call low to moderate income.
And as we're looking at, I heard you also say, what's perceived benefit will have the quickest benefit. If you're looking at service zones and what's currently provided, maybe areas that don't have benefits, that, that could be a, a double win situation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for the presentation, very informative. We're going to move on in the agenda to Public Works, and the first item is a resolution accepting Covenant Court as a public road. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, and that's exhibit number 14. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Tonight, we are requesting to bring before your A request to make Covenant Court be accepted as a public road. Back in August of 2005, the current director at that time did go out and place some street signs at Covenant Court and stated in a memo that the county had done some maintenance on the road, therefore making it a county road. Went back and looked on our database, our database doesn't show any work orders where work has been performed. Now, we do have some work order requests, but our database doesn't show that we do have done any work there. Since that time, I did call our foreman in that area and ask him if he had performed it, even though we didn't have a record. And there indicates that we have done some scraping of the road, graveling, and possibly some ditch work. After that, the residents petitioned our department in August of 2009 to maintain the road and construct a cul-de-sac at the end. The petition stated that the county had done some maintenance work on the road, when it directed the Covenant Court sign and stated concerns about emergency services. We then met with the residents, along with the district commissioner, to explain the process of making Covenant Court a county-maintained road. We have since collected property line information and road data, and alignment was selected that incorporated these existing, the existing driveway with the least amount of impact to the residents. Plats were then generated, and all the necessary property owners signed right-of-way deeds with a condition. That condition was that, of course, if the board agreed to accept this as a county road, that we would maintain the road and record these right-of-way deeds. If the county did not accept this as a public road, we would return those right-of-way deeds and plats back to the property owners, indicating, you know, it was not an acceptance, that transfer did not occur. So this current drive is about .37 miles long, and I would call it in poor condition, it certainly needs some work. The residents are not offering to bring this road up to a standard, but have offered the lay-in there for the right-of-way, which would make us have a 60-foot right-of-way and the land necessary to put a cul-de-sac at the end. This is a very unusual situation in that I believe there's almost seven, I believe, flags that are just side by side by side that go all the way back, and these property owners have a shared easement that, that they use to get to it. I have a picture of it that might help you, there's some in your attachments, but I did bring this one. As you can see, there's, these numerous flags go back and serve these individual lots. There's a dash line there, it's pretty hard to pick up, but there is an existing driveway that, that basically stays about on two of the flags. So what we did when we proposed where the road would go if the board elects to do that was basically incorporate two of those flags, if you will, making a 60-foot right-of-way, and then placing the cul-de-sac at the end that would touch all the, the very end property, so ever property would have frontage along the road. Kind of a very unique situation. That, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I think there's some residents here as well.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Preston?
I saw in the notes, I saw in the notes that the, the county attorney had some, some, made some notes that this might require additional research to be required. Do you, do you want to express, you know, any, any issues that you wanted to address on a legality side of this?
Yes, and Terry broached those in his presentation to you, Commissioner, where he explained about the history of the maintenance of the county transportation department. So if it has been maintained by the county, both through records and through anecdotal references, then that would be sufficient for it to have become a county road, for us to have had some type of interest in the property. So he addressed those concerns.
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
I have a comment to make, and I would certainly solicit the support of my fellow commissioners, in that this is a unique situation, and it's not unique in the fact, has it ever happened in Henry County before? Absolutely, many times. And I could stand to be corrected on the date, but like in 1982, the county changed access to public roads by prescriptive easement, and it had to be deeded right-of-way to the, to the public road. Somehow, and I can't tell you how, because this is certainly before my time as a commissioner, but it kind of came under the radar. The point is, these people were allowed to purchase property with all of these flags off, and off the Sandy Ridge Road, and to have access to their property when in fact there were a couple of people's easements or rights of way that were going to end up having to be impacted. As property changes, property ownership changes, and time goes on, this is a situation that needs to be rectified now, so that we can, in the future, not have this occur again. And I just think it's the right thing to do. Many of these people, or the property owners, have owned property there since the 80s, and it is something that we need to correct and move on.
I think we'll find, Mr. Holder, that as time goes on, more of these things will come before the board. Decisions made many, many years ago are having an effect on us today, and we will be having a discussion in a couple of items about one such item that was a decision made by a board many, many years ago that we're going to have to correct. So it's not a unique, unique situation in that respect. They do come up from time to time, and you're correct, they need to be resolved when they, when they present themselves. Does any board member have a question or comment? At this time, I asked if there are any residents of Covenant Court that wish to come and speak before the board in regards to this item? Yes, ma'am? Thank you, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak about this item? All right, and this is not a public hearing per se, correct, Latonya?
No, we didn't advertise or anything like a public hearing, no.
Do we have to advertise it as a public hearing to accept it?
I just asked that question to the county clerk. I can't recall if we advertised acceptance of these roads as public hearing. I, I just don't recall that. So I'll have to defer to Terry on what he, his usual customary practices.
In the past, we've had one or two of these come up, and we haven't done it as a public hearing. So again, just for the record, I'm not a lawyer, but in the past, I can say that.
Well, I understand.
It requires it, but, so I'll, if it, if it is a requirement, I certainly will make, we'll make that correction. We know, I know that all of the affected property owners have signed the possible right-of-way deeds to the county, but I'll see if notice, more notice is required beyond that.
Okay. And is it okay to move forward with an action tonight, and then if we find that that action is not correct, we can come back and, and properly advertise and, and do it again?
Yes, and in fact, I'll give a notice either way, I'll, I'll make that information out to the board.
Mr. Steen?
Terry, it looks like everybody present here on that road has already donated that future right-of-way, correct, Mr. Steen?
That's correct. One of the things that, before we brought that to the board, was a condition that everybody that would have to contribute property along that road would donate it for us, so we could come before you today saying, "We actually have those signed deeds in hand." The only action that I see that needs to be taken is the board accept them. So yes, if the board accept this as a county road and accept all these right-of-way deeds, we'll record them, and we'll have 60-foot of right-of-way the entire length that we need.
Okay, that was my next question, to see whether or not, because we have petitions here where they've been notarized and signed, to witness that we've accepted, that they have donated the right-of-way-
Right.
-but it has not been recorded at the courthouse yet.
Right. We, we, as we got these right-of-way deeds, we agreed that, a condition, that if the board did not accept it, we'd return all this back, because there'd be no conveyance. They're saying, here they are, and this action tonight, I think, says, "We accept." So the conveyance happens, we record them, it's, it's a road. If the board says no, you know, then it never transferred, they were willing to deed it to us and showed good faith, but we didn't accept them, then we give them back, so.
Okay, thank you.
We, we just handled that because we thought it would be the best to say, "Here they are, they've put pen to pencil and signed and said, 'Yes, we will,' and here they are."
Well, it shows good faith on their side, that they've already made the donation of the right-of-way for us, more so than us coming out here to approve of the road and then having to go back and get the right-of-way. So that's, that's quite pleasant to see it lined up this way.
There is, and I, I don't want to complicate this issue, but once we make that a county road, you'll notice there's still flag lots that some of these property owners will have to cross in order to get to the county road.
to cross in order to get to the county road. As information, all of these people sign perpetual easements that allow them to cross over those lines to get to it. So, I don't see a problem with that. We have also generated plaits where if they're interested enough that they can, all of those little strips of land, they can deed those to each other if they desire, and actually their properties then can come over to the road. But that would be their choosing to do that. Where we get rid of all of those strips of property. But again, that's something that they'll have to do, and we'll meet with them after this and relay that information to them. But, just, that will finish cleaning up that whole mess.
One last thing, Terry, is there any utilities that would have to be relocated because of this?
I believe the only thing out there is power, and, and I don't think we'll have to move anything initially. What we plan to do as a department, basically, is go out there and get that road, gravel scraped, maybe some pipe improvement, but we're not going out there and paving, making any kind of major improvement like that. We're going to get them a wide enough gravel road where they can go up and down it, and I don't think that'll require any utility relocation.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments pertaining to this item? All right, if not, yes, sir, if you could, could you step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record?
I'm Walt Dyer, and we met with you, Terry, here in 2009, and I was elected to frame the questions. And when we moved out there, my wife and I, we own, we own a strip, that big chunk at the bottom left, that's our property, and so we own that strip that goes down Covenant Court. And my dad and my brother and I owned 104 acres. My dad has died. His property passed and was sold to a developer, and he's the one that concocted this scheme to, he's since moved to Florida. But it's worked okay, except we all got a lesson, that was 40 years ago, and I was half my age at 40 years ago, close to half my age. And all that was out there were cows and farms. That property you're looking at is the old Willard Farm. And, and I know Warren will remember it when it was named Willard Road. It wasn't Sandy Ridge Road. That developer got the road renamed to Sandy Ridge. So it was the old Willard Farm, the old Willard Road, is what it was. And so anyways, we, as our neighbors moved in, and they all wanted to cut a little piece of Henry County, because it's such a nice county to live in, we found it that way from the very first. And we moved down, what, in 64? Somewhere in there, and bought the property from a Mr. Sweeney, who was a Navy WWII veteran. And the property in those days was $224 an acre. Anyway, I just haven't remembered that, and I thought it passed along to you. But when we moved down there, there were cows, and there were farms. And then the importance of a public road really hit home when the McTaggarts moved in, Cecil McTaggart over here. And his wife, Betty, got sick. She got sick, and she died on the back of that property, up there on the hill behind the proposed cul-de-sac. And we'll never know what might have been the case, it had flooded then, if we had been able to get an ambulance or a fire engine back there. You couldn't get it back there. The closest we could do was get it on a road nearby and go through the woods, carrying that lady, and she died. And we need access to, all these are good taxpaying citizens, they're good voters, and they need to have emergency care available to them. So, that's why I'm speaking up.
Thank you.
I like the way we took the time for the children. That's just great. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments from the board, there's a resolution before you requesting acceptance as a public road, and Mr. Holder, since this lies in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
Before I do the motion, Madam Chair, I just want to make this clear for the public. In the political climate today, many think that everything we do is for a vote or for political gain. This situation tonight, and I want to pass this along, I can't get one vote out of these, of approving this road, because the road is, the reapportionment has changed the lines. These people who have been in my district all these years won't be able to vote for District One's Commissioner in July, and this will be something that'll stay for 10 years. So, I just wanted to make it, make it clear that many times we do things for the right reason, not to just count a vote. And with that, Madam Chair, I move to approve the request for, to accept Covenant Court as a public road.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. And one correction, you said sometimes we do it for the right reason. I'd like to think most of the time, most all the time, 100% of the time, that that is what we're doing up here.
Maybe I was sharing some of the skepticism that some of our electors, our constituents think about it, that many times it's not for the right reasons.
Well, let's not let that be contagious. Let's continue on with doing the right thing, so, thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to rename Fairview Road to Fairview Medical Parkway. That's Exhibit Number 15, and Terry has a brief presentation that he's going to do, and then we'll make it, ask for.
Terry, before you begin, if anybody lives between Pinola and 155, you are not impacted by this discussion between Pinola and 155. We are not looking to change that particular area to Fairview Medical Parkway. That will remain Fairview Road. I also wanted to say, I was looking to conduct a poll initially, but I do want to hear what you all have to say, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with this. I want to hear your, I want to hear your candid comments, and we'll, we'll see what happens from there. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Steen?
Before you talk, Terry, can we be sure about something? Is this for, is this a public hearing, or is this just a discussion only?
This is a public hearing.
To Commissioner Holmes's comment, it was advertised, as required by law, the area in which we're trying to, that may be subject to a name change. I think after the hearing, you hear it from the citizens, and you have your discussion, you all can decide to take what Commissioner Holmes has said and limit the actual name change area, or go with how the, how the advertisement was run. But I think he's speaking to that. I think he's gotten some information that has led him to conclude that perhaps it would be better to go and not change the entire road, but that'll be a part of the motion that'll be made at the appropriate time, I believe.
Latonya, the reason I said that is, on my agenda tonight, somebody had already in red letter said, "This is not a public hearing, discussion only." It was already pre-printed on my, on my agenda.
It wasn't on that?
It's not, it's not on that.
Anybody know how that happened?
No.
That may have been what I noted for the chairman regarding the
redevelopment.
Discussion of the redevelopment. So if I, if I hit the wrong issue, then I apologize. That was meant for the
It was meant to be put on the one below?
Mm-hmm. I may have, yeah, it was meant for the planning and zoning item, not for the public works item, certainly. And I think the chairman already made that amendment at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. I just need a point of clarification anywhere we were going.
Yeah, then that, again, that would have been
I don't have a red pen up here, so I don't Thank you.
And I guess before we get started too far into that one, I did check, and there is no requirement for a public hearing on the previous action item you have taken. We're fine.
Thank you.
There is a request to change the name of Fairview Road to Fairview Medical Parkway. We did send out letters to all the addresses along Fairview Road, and the letters that our citizens received was a request to change the name of the road from, basically, DeKalb County to 155 or the Rockdale County Line, because that's just about the same place. After that request went in, and the letter sent out, and the notice was given in the paper, I got, received some information from the Tax Assessor's Office about a problem. Now, let me be real quick to say, the Tax Assessor's Office did generate this problem. I heard the problem from them. I promised I wouldn't throw them under the bus, so. The, the problem was this. At Pinola Road, the addresses, I don't know how well if we can see that or not, but if you start at Pinola Road in Fairview, the address given on Fairview's, they start at Pinola and they go basically, say, start at zero, even though I think they start in the 70s or 80s, and they increase going to the east or toward 155. Well, lo and behold, they do the same thing. Again, if you start at Pinola and go to the west or toward DeKalb, the addresses increase as well. I, I can't really say how that problem started, because it's been here a long, long time. So when they heard of this, that we were proposing to change the name of Fairview Road, they said, "Hey, there's some problems you need to know about as well." So at that, I made Commissioner aware of it. Commissioner said, "Maybe we just need to change the road then to Fairview Medical Parkway from the DeKalb County Line to Pinola Road."
Terry, so basically, we have the same addresses on Fairview Road from Pinola to 155 and from Pinola to the DeKalb County Line?
Not the same addresses, but for instance, if I'm on Fairview Road at Pinola, and I go toward 155, for instance, there's an address of, of, say, 447. Well, if I turn around and go from Fairview Road going back toward DeKalb, there's an address of 442. There's no duplicate addresses. In other words, there's not a 442 over here and a 442 over there, but there's a 447 and a 442. So there's close to the same numbers, but no duplication. So if you were looking for 442, say, and I'll just call off some addresses, you would see a 412, a 442, a 468, a 498. All right? If you were looking for 447, there's none on that, in that cluster. You'd have to go way down on the other end of Fairview.
I don't know if we can I have a question for you, Terry. So how much of a problem would that be for our 911 and also our police department in terms of response?
That's correct, and I did a couple of phone calls there, so I can give you all the information on that. For instance, the mail, they deal with that very simply. They give the address, if you're on one side of Fairview from, and let's call Pinola the dividing line, if you're on one side, you get an Ellenwood address, if you're on the other side, you get a Stockbridge address. So that makes it a little easier for the mail. All right? 911, how they do it is, when you call in, if you're on Fairview Road, they get a cross street that you're nearest to. Then that helps, that helps them identify the address. So, I very, called 911 this afternoon and talked to Don, and then I talked to Charlotte, and I said, "Is this a problem?" She said, "No, we've got it under control. It'd be nice to fix it, but we're okay," in that when you call in, they ask for that nearest crossroad, so they know basically where to go on Fairview to get close to that address. So, that's why I think the request was changed to go from the DeKalb County Line to Pinola. The board elects to do that, you'll resolve the, the address problem, although it's being dealt with. So, I hope I portrayed that fairly to 911 and the delivery of the mail. And again, I must say, this has been that way a long time. I know it was here when I came to the county, and that was over 15 years ago, that that problem has existed. Similar problem exists on Yodico, just, just as information. So, I know you, you may want to take a poll, just wanted to make sure the people understand that you may want to change that request from renaming the road from Pinola back to the DeKalb County.
Yeah, I don't think there's a need to take a poll. What I want to do, I want to hear from the citizens, hear what they have to say, and then I will determine, we'll determine, we'll make a determination from there. All right?
Terry, do you have the, I guess, the aerial map that you could put out there and just kind of circle? If you don't, I have one in my book, that you could put down and circle from what point to what point you're talking about, and you can lay it out there, so everyone can also look at that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then the section that you're talking about renaming is from that pink line to the green marker, back toward DeKalb County?
That is correct.
Okay, so anything to the east of that, I guess that's sort of the southern, southeastern direction, is not part of the conversation as far as changing the name?
No, it's not at all.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure for clarity, because we, you know, we have a lot, a lot of conversation going on. I want the citizens to be able to see what portion that Commissioner Holmes is requesting the change take place on, so that everybody's clear.
That's correct.
Okay. Does any board member have a question or comment for Terry before I call for public comments? All right? If not, since this is a public hearing, if you are here in reference to the renaming of that portion of Fairview Road, I would ask that you would, if you're in favor of it, you may come and speak at this time. Is there anyone who's in favor of renaming that section of Fairview Road? Good evening. If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am, I'm Dennis Gossitt. I own property at 442 Fairview Road. And just like Mr. Terry said, there's numbers on both sides of the road, and you can be there, and the fire trucks will go down the street, and then you'll see them turn around and come right back, and you'll say, "I wonder what happened to my neighbors down the street," and you'll go, want nothing, be there, then you go to the other side, and the fire trucks will be on the other side over past Pinola Road. So this is an issue that could be very well corrected with this name change, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the name change to this section of Fairview Road? Good evening. If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carolyn Scarborough. I live at 664 Fairview Road, and I am in favor of changing the name of the road, because I think it will help that part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? All right. If not, at this time, I'd like to ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the name change request? Good evening. If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Joe Everidge. I live at 63 Lakeview Lane, which is about there. So I'm on the side So I'm on the side, I'm two or three blocks south of Fairview, and I'm on the side that would not have a name change. And I'm in favor of a name change, but I'm not in favor of a name change to Fairview Medical Parkway. Henry Parkway is one type of Parkway. In Snellville, the Ronald Reagan Parkway with a limited-access highway is another type of Parkway. Spraggan's Memorial Parkway leading into Hidden Valley Park is the third type of Parkway. Two or three years ago, I went to a meeting with the county where the subject was the moving of the Bethel United Methodist Church Chapel, which, by the way, is in process. And either Thursday or Friday of this week, if you want to see 140-year-old church move, come on by. But I went to the meeting and saw the plans for the improvements to Fairview, and I don't believe that anything in there qualifies it to be called a Parkway. If you wanted to call it Bob Smith Road, I'd be happy with that, although I don't know Bob Smith. But I don't believe it'll qualify to be a Parkway. And in reference to Commissioner Holder's comment about how some citizens might think about how the commission does things, I can't imagine putting the word "medical" in there unless it's a favor to somebody. And that's what I see this as, is a favor to somebody. And that's, besides, it's not a Parkway, and it is a favor to somebody, and that's why I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening. If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Joe Chafin. I've lived in Henry County my whole life. I have a dental practice on Fairview Road in this area. Unbeknown to me, it was changed. As the gentleman said originally, this was not the intent to improve a 911 situation. I hope you can see that. It was for another reason. What, I really don't know. The word "medical" does not apply. I'm a dental office. It behooves my practice to have that name associated with it. 210 Fairview Road, you know, is what it currently is. 210 Fairview Medical Parkway sounds good for a dental office, but it's not right. It's not what's good for the county. It's good for me, but it's not what's good for this county. And I resent the name change. The Parkway, I did not know that wouldn't qualify. I could have lived with Fairview Parkway. I see no reason for a name change. It's going to cause expense to the people that are on the road, and it's unnecessary at a time where people are suffering. A medical facility right across from me is already closed. There are plenty of vacant buildings there that were medical as well. So I just don't know, y'all, where this came from. I'm embarrassed for me to have to be here, to be talking about this, because it's just not right. It's not fair to the other people. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chafin?
What percentage of that impacted road is medical, though? Because if you're a dentist office and...
Oh, there's...
I mean, I know that you don't...
There's nothing there, pretty much, sir. It's just not there. Please hear me. Don't do this to this county. Please.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir, if you could, please come to the front. Good evening, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Hammons, and I live on 1381 Fairview Road. And my biggest question is, I don't understand why it would be changed to Medical Parkway. It could be just as easily Home Depot Parkway, or Kroger Parkway, or any of the other businesses through that general area. And the road already goes from Ward Lake Road to Fairview Road to East Fairview Road, from the Boulder Crest all the way right past Highway 155. And to add another road in there, another road name change seems a little bit silly to me. It doesn't make any sense, and it's going to be, people have to change their addresses and everything else. I just don't understand the purpose of it. Are we going to be building a hospital in that area, or is there future plans for a hospital in that one little section of the road? And if they're not having problems with the 911 or any of the other agencies that use that, then I don't see the purpose of it either.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am, if you could, step to the front. Good evening, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Hayes, 902 Fairview Road. My family has lived on Fairview Road for nine generations, for six generations, 101 years this past February. We, the residents of Fairview, have always been very resourceful and pulled together to provide whatever our community has needed, regardless of the county. When our first school burned, the one closer to 155, the gentlemen of our community came together and built a new school there where Fairview is now. My husband's grandfather, two uncles, other gentlemen of the neighborhood. The land was donated by a neighbor. And the families of these students supplied the wood that fed the pot-bellied stoves that warmed these little, three little rooms. We had the first and second grade in one room, third and fourth in one room, the fifth, sixth, and seventh were in one room. The mothers were the teachers. They were the assistant teachers until the county sent us teachers. And the same was true for the student activities. Our Fairview carnivals were the highlight of our year until it was called now. It's politically incorrect to have a carnival, so it's a, it is a festival, fall festival. The money that we made during that time of the carnival paid for office supplies, playground equipment, and other things that the county did not supply us. Our community grew, and we decided waiting for a fire truck from Stockbridge or McDonough just would not do. So we came together, and we formed our volunteer fire department. These were gentlemen from our community that stopped what they were doing when a neighbor would call and say, "I need help." And that's how we got a fire department from the county, because we had a volunteer fire department. We formed our own civic club and purchased fields, ball fields, the lights, the clubhouse where we played bingo and had other community events. We organized our own athletic association that sponsored boys and girls' sporting activities. In short, I feel that the youth of our Fairview community will not benefit from a cold, sterilized, commercialized name change of Fairview Medical Parkway. I respectfully request that name be, to remain as Fairview. In this world with so much impermanence, we have marriages, longtime marriages that break up. We do not have a guarantee of a job tomorrow. We have foreclosures of houses all around us. I think it's more important now than in any time in our history to give the youth of our community, who will be the citizens of tomorrow, the roots of a neighborhood, a sense of belonging somewhere, I remain a child of God and most respectfully yours. Sarah Hayes.
Madam Chair, this, sir, if you could come back for a second?
I would like to say that the Fairview Civic Club, I'm trying to get the name right, but that organization has given to our police and fire department
Thousands.
For the number of years now, donations totaling literally thousands of dollars. So we would like to thank the Fairview community for what they've done, and these guys have, I've been party to a lot of it. They actually just made presentations at my church here just a few short, just a couple of weeks ago, actually, where they gave money to the police department, the fire department, and I know that they've done a lot of good in the community, and I just...
And those were, those were individual community members in surrounding areas like the Pearson's, who are technically in Clayton County, but they are community. The children today have no sense of community without...
I just wanted to commend the Fairview community for the donations and the things that they've made to help our police and firefighters.
Mr. Holder, before you sit down, I want to add to what Commissioner Bowman said. In the unselfishness of the Fairview Civic Club, in their contributions that have been made to the outdoor education program that I know Brian is familiar with, down at Cooper Hatchet, all the way on the other end of the county, they have built learning centers, gazebos, funded it. And I know three or four. They've also built one at Tussahaw Reservoir. So my point is, they have put a lot of money and were not selfish in keeping it in their community. They spread it out to where they knew that their kids could benefit from this in the future. And I just wanted to applaud the Fairview Civic Club for what they have done. They have absolutely been one of the best-filling profit clubs that I know of that's existed in Henry County.
We have many in our community, community members who have been very, very generous to the community, and it goes back years and years. Like I said, my husband's family has been there 101 years, six generations on that street. We have four generations to go through Fairview School. And if you look, the veterans that have come from Fairview, we have, I don't recall any from the Civil War, but every war ever since, we have community service, Armed Forces Service. We thank you, sir.
Sir, I just want to make one comment. And I've been in Henry County for 10 years, and I think we had the conversation out there, and I didn't know much about some of the contributions you've made to the community. I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it, and...
I cannot take that, sir. It is strictly a community effort. It is not a personal effort. It is totally community.
I was thanking you for your, you know, for volunteering and your contribution along with everybody else who was involved, so thank you so much.
It's home.
Yes, it is. And it's my home as well, and I love the Fairview area, and I want to see it thrive, and I want to pay it...
The youth that I'm speaking of is of your generation.
Correct.
Do they not deserve a neighborhood?
Yeah. They do. Absolutely.
Is there...
I have something else.
I think they've asked if there's anyone else who wants to comment while they have some time left. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Make sure we give everybody an opportunity.
Madam Chair, before we speak, I took up some time, I didn't tell theirs, and so I'd like to...
There's only six seconds left on the clock. I want to give the gentleman an opportunity.
My name is Ron Turpin, and my, my property is at 661 Fairview Road, which is east of Panola Road. To my knowledge, and my family's been in the Fairview community forever, since the mail service started, everything west of Panola Road was Ellenwood. Everything east of Panola Road was Stockbridge. So please don't change the name of Fairview Road, because you're going to ruin the community, and we are proud of our community. And if, may I ask, for the ones that are here from the Fairview community, may I ask the ones that, to stand that are against changing the road, am I allowed to do that?
Certainly.
And as a one from Fairview community that, that are against, would you please stand? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, if we want to ask the people to stand that are against, we need to ask the people to stand that are for it as well. So the people that are for it, can you please stand?
Thank you. Okay. Well, this was an item that was asked to be placed on the agenda by the District Five Commissioner, and so I will look to him for whatever action he wishes to propose to the board.
I just have one other question. I want to ask of the people who spoke in opposition, how many people actually live or work other than Dr. Chafin inside the impacted area? By impacted, I mean the area that we're looking to vote on tonight for the name change.
That's a fair question.
I'm just asking a simple question. It's either yes or no. It's either yes or no. Either yes or no. If you live in the impacted area, please, or work inside the impacted, I know we have Dr. Chafin who has a business inside that area. If you live inside the impacted area, the area we're looking to change to Fairview Medical Parkway, please raise your hand if you spoke in opposition. Okay, thank you so much. Madam Chair, with that, I think this is a great opportunity to help improve our district to, to re-identify this area, revitalize this area as an area that will once again thrive. So with that, I'm going to ask to move forward with the vote.
So that is a motion to approve the name change. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Holmes to change the name from Fairview Road to Fairview Medical Parkway. Is there a second? All right, one more time, I'm going to ask if there is a second to his motion. All right, the motion does for lack of a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Go ahead.
Moving on to the next item, we're going to have a discussion of the urban redevelopment plan for undeveloped or blighted areas within Henry County. Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, is our presenter, and he has with him Joe Young, who will also be explaining much of what we're going to have a discussion about this evening.
Thank you again, Chairman. Welcome again, Commissioners. Just briefly, I'm going to give you a brief overview, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Young. He can kind of give more of a, better overview of redevelopment plans in general, as well as opportunity zones, and how they apply specifically to Henry County. Back in early February this year, Henry County staff was notified that portions of the county, as well as portions of certain of our cities, were included, had been designated to meet the 50% poverty designation based on the 2010 census data. This designation renders an area and adjacent areas eligible for Opportunity Zone Job Tax Credit Program. The program authorizes Department of Community Affairs, DCA, to designate certain areas as less developed, and benefits of those, that designation allows for the eligibility of job tax credits up to $3,500 for each new job. And again, Mr. Young will get more into detail. Prior to making application for each opportunity zone, we must first go through the step, the process of identifying and adopting a redevelopment plan. Again, tonight's meeting is this discussion of what those redevelopment plans entail and is more, just more information for the board and for the viewing public on what opportunity zones mean to the community. So with that, introduce Mr. Joe Young.
Madam Chairman, members, it's my pleasure to be working with your development authority to make an application, hopefully, to the Department of Community Affairs for Opportunity Zone Designation. designation for portions of the county, portions of the incorporated municipalities as well. Let me start first by telling you what an opportunity zone does. And I want to be very specific about this. Michael was quite correct, $3,500 is the job tax credit. It's not up to, it is $3,500 per job, per year, for five years within an opportunity zone. I want to start with that and then go back and tell you sort of what is it. An opportunity zone is a designation of a certain area. That area, once designated by the Department of Community Affairs in the discretion of the Commissioner, for 10 years carries the opportunity zone designation. Any job of any description, provided there are two or more, that is created within that opportunity zone, whether by an existing business expanding or a new business coming in and bringing new employ, employment to the state of Georgia. In either of those circumstances, each new job garners the employer $3,500 per year for five years in Georgia job tax credits. Those job tax credits, unlike the job tax credits that you, that you receive as a tier three county, may be cashed out by retaining employee withholding tax. Typically, when we do job tax credits, most of them fall off at the end of several years because the company, if they have decent accountants, doesn't ever end up owing any Georgia income tax. There's very little corporate income tax owed in this state. Because of that, job tax credits often have no value to the employer, or very little value to the employer, when you're talking about locating a business within your county. In this program, if you burn, let's put it that way, all of your income tax obligation to the state for your company, then your employee's withholding tax, rather than being sent to the state, you retain it in your business until you cash out the $3,500 per year for five years. Your employee is given a accounting entry at the Department of Revenue. They aren't penalized by this. Essentially, what happens is, the company keeps the withholding tax and uses it to build the company. Because of that, these job tax credits have real value. They are in essence cash. This program began about five years ago as an expansion of an existing program which was focused on census tracts. The problem there was identifying high poverty rate census tracts tended to identify solely residential neighborhoods. That meant there were, they weren't zone commercial. You could put all the job tax credits you want to into it and nothing will happen. This program looks at census block groups. You have substantial areas of the county, I don't have a map here, but it's largely Hampton and to the west, the areas surrounding McDonough, the areas surrounding Locust Grove, both incorporated and unincorporated areas. Large areas of census block groups and adjacent block groups, which are eligible for inclusion in this program. The first prerequisite has already been accomplished. You've been, you've been identified, and actually it's very useful. I think you can see here, by geography, about just under half the county's eligible. That doesn't mean it'll all be designated by any manner of means. I want to be very clear about that. The red areas are the census block groups that are driving the designations. The tan areas are their adjacent block groups. The process works this way. And this, by the way, is a process which has been ongoing for several years. There are roughly 77 cities and counties in the state right now with opportunity zones. They range from rural Georgia counties up to Sandy Springs, Roswell, Halving County, Union City, Clayton County, number of your neighboring counties. It's been a popular program for, I think, pretty straightforward reasons. In order to be designated as an opportunity zone, you must be contained within a redevelopment area. A redevelopment plan designates a redevelopment area. A redevelopment area is generally developed out of your comprehensive plan. It identifies the same goals, the same land use objectives, and once that overlay is made, then areas within that overlay are identified for opportunity zone designation. You try to pick the areas the department is going to approve. You try, and you try to go beyond that and try and get as much as you can. That process typically takes several months, anywhere from several weeks to several months. The shortest I've ever been involved in was about six weeks. Yes, sir?
What is the red area? What is the, I think, I think the tan area?
The red area are zones that as of the 2010 census were 15% poverty or greater. Census block groups, which is a collection of census tracts. And as you can see, these cover relatively large areas. They have 15% poverty according to the United States Census. Actually, this one is 20%, 20% or more.
So a business would have to be inside the red in order to?
No, sir. They have to be either in the red or in the tan.
Okay.
Now, I'll tell you, functionally, being closer to the red makes it more likely you'll get the designation. There have been designations of opportunity zones made, Cherokee County is an example, in which none of the opportunity zone was within the red area. The reason in that instance was because the red area was in Acworth. Acworth is across the county line. So they were running on their adjacency to an area of identified poverty. The process goes forward over several weeks. The Department of Community Affairs will come out and look. We collect a lot of data. Your staff has been excellent. I've been working with your staff for a few weeks now. We collect a lot of data. We will prepare redevelopment plan, ask you to approve that redevelopment plan. That will identify areas within which an opportunity zone can be requested. It doesn't behoove you to request an opportunity zone for the entire thing because, for instance, there's no reason to ask for an opportunity zone designation in a residential area. It isn't going to do any good. You end up collecting a lot of data for parcels that can't be approved. It's, there's a great deal of flexibility in how this program works. You can ask for a lot, you can ask for a little. It's up to you. The most important thing about this program for a county like yours is functionally economic development. Typically, you're not just competing with other jurisdictions in Georgia, including the some 77 or up to 80 now, I think, that have this designation. I'm sorry. You're competing with other states. You're competing with Charlotte, you're competing with Florida, you compete with South Carolina. Typically, a county in Georgia, a city in Georgia, has very little to offer to businesses coming in unless they can get the Department, the Department of Economic Development to, to pay attention to them. And even if they do that, the type of job tax credits that are offered, better known as the quality job tax credit, is only available at certain payment levels. So for instance, your county has probably about $40,000 average income. To qualify at all, for the minimum of the, of the quality job tax credit, the jobs have to be at 100 to 120% of that figure. That means that if you, if you have jobs that are less than that, they're not eligible for that credit. The opportunity zone job tax credit applies irrespective of the type of job and it applies irrespective of the salary. Everyone, from the janitor to the CEO, is deemed eligible. Because of that, when you're trying to attract in business to areas and you're in competition, if you have an opportunity zone designation, you can take the amount of jobs that they want to bring in, multiply by 3,500 and multiply by five, and that will tell you how much of an economic benefit they're going to get. And they will get it, as I said, because this comes out of W2, excuse me, out of withholding. They will get that benefit. It will not be left on the table. Some examples that have been out there in the past, Union City was one of the first ones to do this under the new program. Theirs was approved in February of 2009. By July, Dendrian Pharmaceuticals had come to them. They said, "We're interested in the state of Georgia. We're interested in the demographics that you have. You're in competition with some other states. What do you have?" What did they have? Nine and a half million dollars. 500 jobs times 3,500 times five years. And that is a significant amount of money. So at the end of the day, this is a program that you control. You don't have to tell the company, "Go somewhere else. Go up to Atlanta. Ask them." Whatever part of the county and the incorporated municipalities is designated, companies coming in will be eligible and the companies that exist will be eligible as they expand. The only limitation is, if you have only two people in your expansion, they can't be married. I don't know why they did that. I don't recommend that people get divorced to qualify, but, well, $35,000 might be worth it. But I don't tell my wife I said that. If there are any questions that you have, I'll be happy to answer.
When was that you were creating a plan for Hampton?
Yes, sir.
Are you looking to do anything with, in the city of McDonough, Stockbridge and even the unincorporated areas?
We've actually met with the city of McDonough earlier today. We've had conversations with the city of Stockbridge, obviously from the area that touches within incorporated areas of Stockbridge. So we're trying to move this concurrently with, with all, with all the cities and move as expeditiously as we can, but we have begun the process of working with Joe and certainly with, in conjunction with our development authority as well, of developing the redevelopment plan. Started with Hampton. We're working with, again, after the meeting today, I think we've got to be strong strides with the city of McDonough and we'll be setting up, setting up subsequent meetings with the city of Stockbridge as well.
How about outside of the cities? Any, is there other opportunities there?
Well, you know, our focal point has been, you know, structuring the redevelopment plan centered around the identified poverty areas.
The exciting part about this, and I appreciate Joe calling me early on, as soon as the census information came out, I would have never, because we had the conversation, I think at Eggs and Issues Breakfast, about the airport, I would have never guessed that the airport area would have fallen into eligibility as an opportunity zone. And so when those numbers came out and he called me, lo and behold, the airport is right smack in the middle of an area that will qualify and the timing couldn't be better. And Michael and his staff and I want to say how much I appreciate Bob White allocating the money needed to get this pushed through expeditiously, as Michael said, because we thought the legislator, the legislature would be taking this up to bump the poverty percentages up to 20%, in which case we would have lost the city of McDonough. And we didn't want to lose any area within the county that we could use as an economic development incentive to bring companies here. So that's, we're really pretty far along in the process because we've been pushing and pushing and pushing to try to get it done as quickly as possible. Once the board agrees on the areas that they feel are, are the best for the county to pursue opportunity zones, on, the final decision rests with the Commissioner from the Department of Community Affairs. And I've already had preliminary discussions with him and he welcomes the opportunity to come to Henry County and, and to go and visit these sites. And so hopefully, within the next few weeks, we can really make some huge strides into, to getting this done and it's, it's going to be a great benefit to the county.
Yeah.
Mr. Bowman?
Michael, could we, or could I, and I'm assuming the other Commissioners as well, I would like to have a map showing my area.
Sure.
You know, District, District Four, and I would, I would assume that Commissioner Holmes would want District Five, something. I, I can't tell where it stops and starts. I know I've got a lot of commercial-
Sure.
-along the Parkway. I know I've got a lot of commercial over, you know, on 42 that's running through my district and I can't, I can't get a handle on it from this amount, but I would like to have that. I think that's a very good tool. When, I've gotten calls from, you know, businesses that would like to relocate in the area and ask questions to me. And they're, they're small businesses, which 90% of the businesses are small businesses, but this could be a good tool to have in our toolbox. And I would like to have a copy of that.
I'll go with Pat Delk, Department of State of Maryland. We'll put some together for certainly District Four, District Two, District Five.
That'd be great. You know, where I can read the roads and get it so that I know exactly where we're talking about would be great. But I think it's, obviously, it's a great tool to have in your toolbox and a program that we can offer some things because we, we don't, we, by state law, we, we can't offer a whole lot. I mean, you know, we're, we're kind of reduced to what we can actually do, but that would be good.
And these are state incentives. It's nothing out of the county's pocket or anything. These are all state incentives. So that's, that's a great benefit. Mr. Preston?
I have two questions. Is that, um, once this, you, you get this designation and it moves forward, is it only forward looking or is any of it retroactive to prior, you know, when you made the, when you hit this? None of it's retroactive, I take it?
I have to check on that. I was asked that question earlier today. I honestly don't know the answer.
Right.
I try not to try and interpret the law on the fly. It is, I, I do know this, it doesn't matter when within the year you're designated, after you're designated, that the person is hired. So for instance, if you hire someone in December, you get the credit for that fiscal year, January 1 to December 1. I like to check to see whether there's any reach back at all. If you're designated in mid-year, if people that you hired earlier in the year, it's simply not a question I've been asked before, oddly enough.
Well, the reason I ask also is, I just can't help but ask because I know we do have small business owners that live in Henry County. I've been approached by, I own several small businesses, I know several other Commissioners do, and I've been approached by consultants that will supposedly go out and get all these type of credits, whether it's the quality job tax credit, the opportunity, you know, credit that we're talking about here. Is that something that, I'm just trying to think of every benefit for our existing citizens who own businesses. How do you, you know, what's the process? I mean, this seems like something that's good for the big businesses, but how does a small businessman take advantage of this?
Let me ask, answer that in two ways. First of all, no, nobody can come and say, "Commissioner, I'm going to get you an opportunity zone." Only you can do that.
Right.
Your, your board has to approve, first of all, putting it within a redevelopment area. Secondly, submitting an application. Thirdly, that has to be approved by the Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs.
I understand that.
So there's, there are limitations on that kind of thing. On, on the, on the other one that you mentioned, the, the, the quality job tax credit, that's within the discretion of Department of Economic Development. That is a very, a completely different program, run by a different department, different criteria. That is something that a, a business consultants often do, take large prospects. And they're, as you know, they take a, the department, that department takes a very high level view. It's hundreds of jobs, big projects like the one that just stood out in Clark County. How does this affect you as a small business owner? I'll use myself. My, I'm a small business owner too.
Right.
And we have two people. If I were in an opportunity zone and I doubled my staff, I would provide, I didn't have my wife come in, I would be entitled to $7,000 per year for five years, $35,000. It's free of state income tax, by the way. You don't get charged state income tax on the money that you get. I am not going to get $3,500 back from the IRS this year. I certainly wish I was. But if I was to get $7,000 per year for the next, for the next five years, I would thoroughly enjoy that. How does it work for the small business? This is what you do. Small businesses have to have business licenses. You send out in your business license notices every year and you can identify the addresses by GIS that are within the designated opportunity zones, whatever that ultimate designation looks like. And it may be small, it may be large, that's up to the Commissioner. You send them out a notice and you say, "Did you hire anybody this past year? Did you increase your FTEs, your, your full-time equivalents?" And if they say yes, then you say, "You contacted someone on our staff. We put you in contact with Department of Community Affairs." There's a form you send them, goes to the Revenue Department, you burn up your income tax and they send you another form and you start keeping the withholding tax. This has been going on for several years now. As I say, Union City's been using this since February of 2009, has attracted a lot of jobs. That's one of the things I've never heard any criticism of is how well it works for the smaller businesses, because it works for everybody. One of the great things about this is, unlike the tier benefits, which we all think criticize, this one doesn't, it doesn't specify warehousing is the winner, distribution is the winner, medical is the winner. It doesn't make any difference. It's a legal job. And it doesn't say you have to be paid this much money. It says, "Is this a job?" At the end of the day, it's as good for small business, it's as good for existing business within the community as it is for outside. As you said, it's a tool, but it's a tool with great versatility. Not just boosting your own local economy with your own small businesses, but also when the opportunity comes to make a presentation to a larger company, there isn't an upper limit. If they bring in 1,000 jobs, it's $3.5 million a year. And that's just the way the math works.
Okay. And this is good for 10 years until the next census data comes out?
It is good for 10, the designation is good for 10 years. You can re, two things. You can reapply for it at the end of the 10 years. Secondly, you can always ask during the 10 years, if you don't get what you want the first time, and nobody ever gets everything they ask for, but you certainly try, you can continue to go back, as I said earlier today, just like my son does, keep coming back to see if I- Keep coming back to see if I maybe I've changed my mind. I don't. But, you can, you can ask. Second thing is, any job that's created gets, during that ten years, gets the full five-year benefit. If you create it in the tenth year, they'll continue to pay that credit out to the, out to the fifteenth year.
Thank you.
Michael, I can't see it from where, because this map is pretty small. But, of the red around the McDonough close to the interstate, how much of that is incorporated around the industrial area on the exit two eighteen? Because it doesn't cross, but it goes, it looks like it goes up to it.
I think you're referring to.
It's somewhere in that vicinity, correct?
It doesn't, the poverty area doesn't cross seventy-five. However, as Mr. Young has noted, your redevelopment area, we can designate an area that goes beyond the boundaries of the red fifteen percent poverty levels. So, you can reach out onto some of the business corridors along Highway Twenty, One Fifty-five, State Route Twenty-three Forty-two. It can be expansive enough to include, you know, some of our highly concentrated industrial and commercial areas.
Well, the reason I said that, there is, there are several warehouses right now that just happen to be vacant. And they're on that industrial corridor right, right, close to the interstate, which is definitely in this zone. It looks like, it looks like probably this building around, this area around this building is in that zone, correct?
Yes.
I believe it is. If I could elaborate a little bit, sir. The brown designation here is an adjacent block group. The law reads that the, you can put it this way, the red drives the map. The red is, this is one census block group. Because this block group here is adjacent to it, it is also eligible. It doesn't have, the red isn't, is not as, of as much significance as it might appear. That's the driving block group. The other ones, let's call them those, are the driven block groups. But, you can extend the zone out into the brown area. There's no question about that at all, and it is frequently done. The reason why is this. Census Trax, census block groups were not designed with economic development in mind. The world is divided into census block groups for demographic purposes. It's up to the community to try to figure out, how can we best drive business? Where should we make our ask? Where should you make your ask? It should be where you have the greatest opportunity to expand and attract businesses. That's what brings jobs in and drives that red down eventually. Because we don't all work and live within the same census block group by any manner or means.
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
If you would zoom out on that map, just looking at the map, I would assume that Locust Grove has no poverty and no opportunity zone. Is that correct?
By the map, again, data based on the two thousand and ten census, there were, the census tracts did not identify an area within the Locust Grove area that met the criteria for the fifty percent poverty level.
I thought I saw a map earlier in the presentation where all four cities had a red, red blighted area.
That information was generated by, the formula is generated by HUD.
Who do I believe?
Well, again, I think it's just different, I think it's different data, because it's basically on census.
The point I'm making is, it is confusing because we just saw a map where all four cities had a blighted or a poverty area. Now, we're seeing one with three. And this one is basically saying that Locust Grove has no poverty and there's no opportunity zone there. That is, as if there is no business or no industrial, commercial, whatever, that exists in that area. That is totally wrong.
Right. The map from earlier, as depicted from our consultant that was talking about the CDBG funds, that was principally focused on the load of moderate income based on the formula as generated by HUD as opposed to the poverty designation that comes through from census. And I can get you that distinction of what those differences are.
Okay. That's fine. But, if, the way this map is presented and the way it's been presented, as it stands today, if I were a business in Locust Grove, Georgia, I would not have an opportunity zone and I would not be entitled to the thirty-five hundred dollars a year for five, ten years, correct? Five years?
The way that works, sir, is based on the difference between federal law and state law. HUD designations are driven that way.
I understand that, but my point is this.
Yes.
The way the map is shown tonight, I would not be entitled to it.
That's correct, sir.
I rest my case. I rest my case. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'm joined by Fray. I apologize for hopping up to the bandstand here, but just to, if I may, just address a couple of the questions. Commissioner Preston raised a good question about some of the credits, small business in particular. The way that the job tax credits are structured right now in the state, we're Tier Three, which means we're one of the more affluent of the counties, in the one hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia. Right now, many small businesses don't qualify. You have to create at least fifteen jobs, and it's typically limited to manufacturing, distribution, and those types of jobs. Retail jobs, smaller service-type jobs don't qualify. The total job tax credit that would apply is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per job. As Mr. Young indicated, most of the companies structure themselves in such a way as they have very limited state income tax liability. So, it's really less of an incentive for them to be able to retail. With the exception of the Tier One counties, the most poverty-stricken counties in the state, retail doesn't qualify for the job tax credits, except in the opportunity zones. And my counterparts who have the opportunity zones will have told me that of their industrial sites and properties and buildings, that really the only thing that's been showing in the last couple of years during the economic downturn were those areas in the opportunity zone. But, it's one of those few areas where small business can qualify for this credit. And whether or not you have a corporate income tax liability, every company has a payroll withholding opportunity, which is a tremendous, and I'll give you a quick example. In the, Mr. Young alluded to the former way that we looked at opportunity zones. And according to the two thousand census, we only had one area in the county that qualified. And it's that area in McDonough that qualified potentially for an opportunity zone. We met with the county, city administrator about two years ago to discuss that because we wanted to move forward with that, that area. If you come across into the shaded area there, there are immediately adjacent block groups that are in there, it does carry, in McDonough, some very attractive areas for development. The South Point area and some of those areas coming down toward our industrial area. Part of the West Ridge area potentially could be in that area. So, it's a huge economic driver to drive job creation and not just manufacturing, distribution, but any jobs that fall within that. And some of your clients who. Yeah.
Did you just say earlier that that tax credit didn't apply to retail?
No, it doesn't. In, the current job tax credit that we have in place right now does not qualify for retail jobs. Under the opportunity zones, any two or more jobs.
So, South Point would qualify, because I'm thinking South Point is retail. Under this, it would qualify.
Yes, it would. And it would not qualify under the normal job tax credits that you have there. I'll give you a real quick example. We had a company, one of our local companies, Alpla. It's an Austrian plastics company, has its North American headquarters and technical center here and manufacturing presence. And they were considering relocating their technical center to another state, to a location where they could expand into a building that didn't need expansion. We didn't have any, it did not meet the criteria, the threshold to meet any things. We heard the quality jobs, right now, that's a fifty-job minimum creation. And those jobs have to be in those incremental increases on the higher salaries. There was legislation in, I don't think it's died yet, but it's in the process of dying in the current session. That would have lowered the threshold.
I think it was passed by the Senate yesterday.
Okay. That would have been a great tool for us. Alpla would be in the immediately adjacent block group to the McDonough area. We would have had, we were literally facing a situation where the other state had a million dollars in incentives on the table for that. We were able to retain the business in that area, but that's an area that, had we had the opportunity zone in place, that business could have gotten those credits. And that would have been the most aggressive tax credits in the state of Georgia that we have there.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd mention the fact that I've had a couple, I actually had one reasonably large. And Bob, I don't know if they've talked to you yet, but it's a call center. And the call center's located currently in South Carolina. It's about three hundred jobs when it comes into Henry County, but there has to be some incentives. So, I'll make a phone call now because that gentleman, I know that gentleman real well. So, I'll make a phone call now and tell him, you know, we'll have to look at some areas, but there's a good possibility.
It really does step us up into a different area for incentives that we did not previously have. And it was literally, as the chairman noted, we've been watching the, waiting for the census tract data to be populated into the DCA site. And actually, Mr. Young and one of his associates and I had a conversation about some of their clients that they were working with on opportunity zones at a Senate Economic Development Hearing a couple of years ago. And we were watching the things that, literally, I think, the day that it made the DCA website or whatever, Joe contacted the chairman. And when we saw the areas, the broader group of areas that included Stockbridge, that included the Hampton area in that, it blew our mind.
Very exciting.
And it was literally strategically, when you look at the growth and when you look at areas like the airport in that immediate area, that is a huge, huge incentive for us to be able to go. So, that's why the Development Authority was very excited about that prospect of why we funded the consultant to work with the county to put this together.
It's been a great team effort, because, I mean, Bob got right on that with the board members to allocate the funds to do that. And Michael and staff have been working very diligently to get that information together. It's a lot of data that has to go in. So, very, very excited about this opportunity for an opportunity zone. But, this is, we're going to bring this back, not the first meeting in April, because that is on a Monday. That's a workshop meeting, a non-action item meeting. So, the first Tuesday in April, we'll bring that back and advertise that as a public hearing. Do we have time to get that advertised in that timeframe?
Two weeks, I believe, two weeks, fifteen, twenty? Yeah, I believe it should be, a two-week timeframe is now required in that case.
There's no.
That's correct.
It's whatever your local timeframe is.
Yeah.
But, I wouldn't say we should get it out sooner rather than later.
We'll get that out this week. I'll work with Sherri and her staff, and we'll get that out. And also, you know, working in conjunction with some of the cities as well to.
And information to each of the districts on what specific areas.
Correct.
Could potentially apply for the opportunity zone designation.
Yes, we will.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Wonderful information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is a discussion regarding the county manager. Our presenter is Latonya Wiley, County Attorney. That's handout number one.
Good evening, Mountain Chairman, members of the board. I hate to be late in the late evening, but I wanted to bring to you an update concerning the county manager ordinance. As y'all know, several weeks ago, you made an appointment to the deputy county manager position, providing review and possible amendment to the county manager ordinance. So, I've come before you tonight to bring you an update on what has transpired with respect to the review and analysis of the existing ordinance as it pertains to the county manager position. And I'll, I have given you all a handout, but I will be, try to be brief and not read verbatim. But, there are some important things in this presentation that I think will be ungood for public consumption and will enlighten a lot of people, because I know that I was enlightened as we looked at the history of this particular ordinance. I wanted to start by discussing the, generally, the types of laws that impact Henry County, because all of those laws will be discussed tonight and with respect to the application of the county manager ordinance. You have the general laws and statutes which are enacted by the General Assembly. Those have statewide application and can only be amended by the General Assembly or struck down by a court of law. You have the local acts or local legislation. Those two are enacted by the General Assembly. And they have local application to a particular jurisdiction only. And those can be amended by the General Assembly or by the local jurisdiction if it falls within the scope of the Home Rule Powers granted to the counties without any further involvement of the General Assembly. Then you have resolutions or ordinances, and those are elected by you, the local governing authority. General Assembly is not involved. And you all can do amendments to your resolutions and ordinances pursuant to the rules that you, you pass, unless otherwise provided by state law. And I cited an example because state law requires public notice and hearing process before a local zoning ordinance can be amended. So, that's one example where you have a local zoning ordinance, but state law tells you what you have to do in order to amend it. That really is the exception, not the norm. For the most part, your resolutions and ordinances can be amended in the manner that you deem necessary in your own ordinances. Of course, we have federal law that supersedes state law, local acts, and resolutions and ordinances. And those, of course, include the Constitution, federal statutes, and federal agency regulations. So, just to highlight the hierarchy, you have the federal rules, you have the state statutes, and the local acts enacted by the General Assembly. And then you have your local laws that you all enact by ordinance and resolutions. So, what do we have involved here? We have the subject county manager ordinance. And as we examine that, it involves looking at state statutes, local acts, ordinances and resolutions passed by you, and the application of federal preclearance laws. So, all of the laws that I enumerated in the previous slides will be examined and are applicable to what we're going to discuss tonight. Let's look at what the state law says on county managers. Since nineteen seventy-four, it has been the law of this state that the local board of commissioners has the singular and exclusive right to establish the qualifications of its county manager. And this is what the state law actually says. That the qualifications, the method of selection, the appointment, the compensation, the tenure, and any other related matters pertaining to this position shall be provided for by the governing authority of the county. Direct quote from Georgia statute. So, I went back and looked at the timeline of relevant events as it pertains to the statute that's codified in our code of ordinances. And I found that in nineteen eighty-two, the General Assembly enacted local legislation creating the position of county administrator in Henry County. It's important to note that at that time, Henry County had a five-member board of commissioners, and there was no office of chairman. And included within this local act, there were job duties of the county administrator, not county manager, but county administrator, county commissioner provision that said that the county commissioner could not serve as county administrator until one year after expiration of the term of office. And there was also a provision that said the county manager could not run for a commission seat until one year after leaving office. In nineteen ninety, we had local legislation that was passed creating the office of chairman of Henry County, subject to approval by way of photo referendum. And it's important to note that this local act repealed the nineteen eighty-two local legislation creating the county administration, administrator position. So, that law said that if the voters approved having an at-large chairman created for Henry County, that there would not be a county administrator position unless the board so chose to have one. So, the voters approved, as we know, the office of chairman of Henry County on November sixth, nineteen ninety. And I want to make a point that nowhere in our code of ordinances does the county manager ordinance reference that fact. You can see here how thick this book is. So, we really, when we were looking at this, you really have to peel back layers of an onion to get the information I'm giving you today. It's not readily available in our county book of ordinances. So, after the voters. So after the voters in Henry County voted to have an elected, at-large elected chairman, we had an election in November of 92, and I believe that the first at-large chairman, they told me, was Bill Gardner. He was scheduled to take office beginning January 1st, 1993. So in 1992, December of 92, the then-five-member Board of Commissioners reinstituted the county manager position by way of resolution. Not local legislation, similar to what had been created with the county administrator position, but the commissioners just passed a resolution, 92-12, creating the county manager position. That 1992 resolution was essentially a repeat of the previously repealed local legislation that had created the county administrator position. And the biggest difference was that the commissioners at that time removed the residency requirement that required the county administrator to live in Henry County. They took that out, and I think I spoke previously in a public session that people who were here at the time, who have firsthand knowledge of it, have indicated to me that that was to accommodate Mr. Aubrey Harvey, who served in that position, who was a resident of Newton County. So the 92-12 resolution is, was codified in Henry County Ordinance Number 2-2-51. So when we, when the board made the appointment initially, and when the issues came out with the appointment of Mr. Alata to the position, when we first looked at that ordinance, there were some concerns that I noticed right away as to whether or not, that made me question whether or not that ordinance was in fact valid and enforceable. And the two provisions that carried over, 2-2-51B, commissioner not being eligible for appointment to county manager for one year after leaving office, and the county manager's ability to run for office for one year after leaving that, presented areas in which I felt additional research was needed while we undertook a review of this ordinance. And mainly, the issues that I was concerned with were preclearance issues. We are all familiar with preclearance. We just went through a very long and educational process with our redistricting map. The Sunday alcohol ordinance matter was just that the voters just voted on. That was submitted for preclearance most recently, vote of precinct changes. Anything that affects voting has any type of minor or indirect impact on voting. Georgia is still amongst one of a handful of southern states that have to submit any of those type issues to the Justice Department for preclearance. And if such a provision exists in state or local law, it can be a state law, it can be a resolution, it can be an ordinance, it can be a personnel provision, anything that includes elective offices, their eligibility, any other burden or requirement imposed on elected officials must be preclear. So following Mr. Alata's appointment, we undertook the process of first seeking to amend the county manager ordinance. That was our first step. And if you remember, we came before you, we changed it to deputy county manager, and we undertook the process of trying to amend the ordinance in order to address the concerns. And in order to amend a local act, you have to advertise in the newspaper for three weeks. So as we were doing that, we still undertook a separate review, which gave us time to look at whether or not this ordinance was in fact a valid ordinance. So during this three-week time period, we learned that the local legislation that's referenced in our county Code of Ordinance was repealed when the office of chairman was created. Therefore, we did not need to go through the local amendment process. Instead, if the board wanted to amend the ordinance, it could do so at any time on its own motion, just as you have done hundreds of times during your collective tenure in In addition, I sought the input of outside counsel to review these issues to see if my interpretation or my feelings about this particular ordinance were consistent with that of outside counsel. And I asked two questions. I sent it out to someone who does not have any ongoing relationship with the county, someone who is very knowledgeable in the areas of state law, federal preclearance issues. And I asked two questions. Should the provisions of the county manager ordinance, those two provisions, have been submitted for preclearance with the Justice Department? And if it should have, would the failure to submit these provisions to the Justice Department render the ordinance invalid and unenforceable? And this is the, in sum, what was provided back to me by our outside counsel review. Yes to each of those questions. Yes, it should have been submitted for preclearance. And yes, it would render the ordinance invalid and unenforceable if it was not submitted. And the ultimate conclusion of the counsel was, because those sections were not preclear, they are unenforceable. During the same three-week timeframe, all the while we were running the advertisement on the possible amendment, but we're doing our due diligence and research during the same time, but I contacted the Justice Department for, the legal department for the Department of Justice, and asked the same questions that I asked my outside counsel, and got the same answers from the legal department. These provisions in the 1992 resolution should have been submitted, and they are invalid and unenforceable until approved. They also told me that they had no record of that resolution and corresponding ordinance having ever been submitted for preclearance. And again, that's just the ultimate conclusion. Though I had initially, the outside counsel reached and the Department of Justice, legal department confirmed, that those, that ordinance is invalid and unenforceable because it had never been preclear. Now, for members of the public, I know the board is aware of this, because you all have gone through this, many of you have been affected more harshly than others on these issues. But we have had, in recent times, we've had a number of older county ordinances that we discovered have never been submitted for preclearance. And they were on the books, presumably valid, but they had never been submitted. And one example, one of the first examples that I recall, is in April of '04, the then-District Three Commissioner resigned from office in order to run as a candidate for chairman of Henry County. And he relied upon, in making his resignation, he relied upon in 1987, a local act, it was a county ordinance, that prohibited a person from seeking office if the person held any other office. And this was a local act passed by our General Assembly. It was codified and placed in our county book of ordinances. And this, the District Three Commissioner resigned from his seat in reliance upon that. Following his resignation, there was a lawsuit filed against a sitting District Two Commissioner who was also running for the office of chairman. And the lawsuit said, because you are holding the District Two Commissioner's seat, you're not eligible to run for chairman while holding your seat. And during this challenge, it was discovered that that 1987 local act had never been preclear and was therefore unenforceable. So 17 days after the District Three Commissioner resigned, the BLC voted to reappoint him to fulfill his unexpired term of the office he had vacated in order to right a wrong. In addition to that, between 2004 and 2007, and probably before 2004, there were a number of employees who either resigned their county employment or took leave of absence in order to run for elective office. Those actions were taken in reliance upon a provision in our county personnel policy that require employees seeking elective office to resign or take a leave of absence when they declare their candidacy for office. So what happened in 2008, when it was time to, there was an issue with trying to enforce this particular provision, we did further research and looked at it, peeled back the onion, looked at the layers to see whether or not it had been preclear, and lo and behold, it had never been preclear. Again, that particular personnel policy provision, to my knowledge, had been in place for 15 years before this was discovered. And then there was yet another county ordinance that was enacted in the early 90s. It was another local act passed by the General Assembly that said that county employees are not to hold public office. That too had never been preclear. And as we were looking at all this, when the county administrator position was repealed by the creation of the county chairman office, I went back to make sure that the creation of the office of chairman was preclear. I mean, I was seeing so much, and yes, it was, it was preclear, but it was preclear a year after the election was held. Now, it should have been preclear before that, but it was preclear December 30th, 1991, it was submitted for preclearance. The election was held November of the prior year. So like, the DLJ could have invalidated the action, but I think they gave the county some grace on that. But they, they precleared it. And I showed those to show that there were, that this particular issue with respect to the county manager ordinance, it's not the first ordinance that we've discovered never went to preclearance. There is nothing in our Code of Ordinances that would tell you that you really have to go back, go back to the, try to find the, someone who was here, or unfortunately, the records just aren't very clear on that. So you contact the Justice Department, and they will send you confirmation, or they will tell you, no, it was never submitted for preclearance. All the issues that I have cited in this presentation have since been corrected. So I don't want, and you all know that, members of the board, we have taken measures to correct each of those instances that I've cited in this presentation. So the Board of Commissioners was under no restriction concerning the appointment of Fred Alata to the position of county manager. Even if the ordinance had been preclear, though, even if it had been preclear, and it was lawfully on the books, and it could be enforced, Georgia law gives the Board of Commissioners a singular authority to establish the qualifications, the tenure, and method of selection of the county manager. And y'all could have amended the ordinance and set the qualification in any manner that you deem feasible. And I think it's important to note that there is no requirement that the duties and functions of the county manager be spelled out in ordinance form. At the end of the day, the county manager, the appointment is a simple personnel transaction that you all make. It's a hiring decision, nothing more, nothing less. I do believe that when the first county administrator position was created by local act, that was done at a time when there was a five-member Board of Commissioners. There was no chairman who was vested with the executive authority of this county, and so the county administrator position probably was created by local legislation to address that. But that certainly is not the requirement, that you have to set out your county manager functions or duties in an ordinance form. When the board did that, made that decision in 1992, and did so, you know, one month before the first elected chairman was coming into office, so I can make some assumptions about why that was done, but I won't, I won't. So here's what I recommend after looking at all of this. I recommend, it's my recommendation, the board repeal that ordinance 2-2-51 in its entirety. One, because it's not valid and it's unenforceable, but also because there is no need to have your county manager position placed in ordinance form. So I recommend that you enact a new resolution that adequately addresses the, this matter in a manner that's consistent with Georgia law. And if you choose to, let me go here. The proposed amendment that I have drafted says that you would create the position of Henry County manager. That will be in the ordinance. It says that the county manager shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the board. No person shall be chosen as county manager before he shall have attained his or her 21st birthday, promises to say he or she shall have attained his or her 21st birthday. Such person shall be of good character and of proven executive ability and experience. The county manager shall be chosen by the Board of Commissioners solely on the basis of his or her executive administrative qualifications, with special reference to such person's actual experience and/or knowledge of accepted practice with respect to the duties of the office as may be prescribed by the Board of Commissioners by way of job description, contractual agreements, or both. And should the board accept this recommendation, enact this ordinance in lieu of what's on the books, then Mr. Alata will actually be the first county manager since 1992 who is appointed pursuant to a properly adopted, legally enforceable ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions the board may have.
Do any board members have a question or comment? Very good job. And just for the record, so the public is clear on who you spoke, who you used as outside counsel. You chose someone with a tremendous amount of experience in state law, and I think that should be shared.
Thank you, Chairman. I did. I chose Michael Bowers. Mr. Bowers was the Attorney General for the State of Georgia for 16-plus years. He has an exceptional legal background in these type issues, dealing with local issues, state issues, federal issues. And the county does not, and I do not have any type of ongoing or professional relationship with him. I know of him through his reputation as being an excellent lawyer who has this particular knowledge. And I thought that he would give me, give the board, the best analysis of this issue, and I wanted to get the best, to get the best answer, because it was a matter of great public concern. There has been a lot of discussion about this, and I want the citizens to be assured that this issue was thoroughly vetted, and it was. And I thank the board for not telling, when I told you all I was going to seek outside counsel, you all didn't tell me who to get and who to select. Y'all left that to me, and I chose someone who I felt would be, whose opinion I would feel comfortable relying upon to present to you.
All right. So the first matter of business that we need to take up is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners repealing Henry County Ordinance 2-2-51 and creating in lieu thereof a new ordinance regarding the county manager position with the language that Ms. Wiley just shared, basic, that spelled out the position of county manager without-
And that's an Exhibit A of your-
Exhibit A of the resolution. Are there any questions, comments, before I ask for a motion?
Madam Chair, before you ask for a motion, I'd like for someone to read into the record the actual resolution as it's stated, because the actual resolution just certifies everything that Ms. Wiley has spoken to and about in this presentation. And I think it would be important that we read it into the record and have that as part of the record in what we're doing.
Very good.
Would you like to go, Chairman, or would I?
I'll read it into record. It says, "Whereas since 1974, the Georgia General Assembly has given county commissioners the exclusive right to formulate and choose the qualification method of selection, appointment, compensation, tenure, and such other related matters pertaining to the office of county manager, and subsequently codified in OCGA 36-5-222. And whereas in 1992, the Henry County Board of Commissioners passed Resolution Number 92-12, instituting the county manager position of Henry County as subsequently codified in Henry County Ordinance Number 2-2-51, the county manager ordinance. And whereas the county manager ordinance contains provisions which require preclearance by the United States Department of Justice, and whereas, according to the Department of Justice, the county manager ordinance was never submitted for preclearance at any time since 1992 to the present date, and whereas the lack of preclearance renders part or all of the county manager ordinance invalid and unenforceable. And whereas, Henry County Board of Commissioners deem it in the best interest of the citizens of Henry County if Henry County Ordinance Number 2-2-51 were repealed and replaced with a new ordinance provision as shown on the attached Exhibit A, and whereas the current job description of county manager is attached heretofore at Exhibit B, and such job description may be amended from time to time within the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia, does hereby repeal Henry County Ordinance Number 2-2-51 and its enabling resolution Number 92-12 and insert-" Number 92-12, and insert in lieu thereof the amended provision as shown on the attached Exhibit A. All laws and parts of laws in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed." And that is the resolution in its entirety, and if there's no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Holder?
And I have to defer to the county attorney. We are legal in repealing an ordinance with one reading, does not require two.
Our ordinance does not require that. I know some jurisdictions have a two-reading requirement. If you were repealing a local act that had been, if the local act had never been repealed and you were amending the local act that had been created by the General Assembly, you will have had to have two readings. But what you're doing is repealing not a local act, but your own ordinance that you created.
I just want to make it clear for the record.
Mr. Bowman?
Piggybacking on Commissioner Holder, I would also like to ask this question or make, I know the answer to it, so I'm just going to, you know, ask it just for the public benefit, is that we're repealing an ordinance that is unenforceable. So really, we're doing away with something that we could not enforce in any way, shape, or form, and it's not just according to yours because I had another firm take a look at it for me-
Okay.
-and came up with the very same answers. So I feel like that, I wanted to make that known, Commissioner Holder, also, that we're repealing something that is unenforceable.
Yes.
I mean, it's just something that we need to do as housekeeping more than anything else.
It is.
Okay.
And will answer.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, I will look to a motion.
I'd like a motion with approval.
Do we have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. And with that, I would also ask that we would amend the agenda and ask if we could have a discussion on appointing Mr. Alletta as county manager rather than deputy county manager. We have a motion by Mr. Bowman, the second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. And so we've amended the agenda to have that discussion, so do we have a motion on the floor to give him the designation of county manager?
I move that we-
Do it all in one motion.
Do it all in one motion.
All in one motion. Mr. Holder, you made a face. Did that not sit well with you?
I made a face. I think it would be a lot cleaner if you amended the agenda and then made a second motion, too.
I make the motion that we amend the agenda.
Well, we did the amendment of the agenda. I need a motion to officially designate Mr. Alletta as county manager.
I'd make the motion that we officially name Mr. Freda Alletta as the county manager.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think someone sent him a junior deputy, a plastic junior deputy badge, and he's been kind of wearing that around, but thank you for your patience. Did anyone sign up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
Did you say county manager?
That's what I said.
Okay.
County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, April the 2nd at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, April 3rd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. All county offices will be closed Friday, April the 6th, which is a floating holiday, and Monday, April the 9th, which is a furlough day. Monday, April 16th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, April 17th at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular commission meetings. If there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.